Good evening, good evening. Welcome to our regularly scheduled April meeting. Barb, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mrs. Johann.
I'm here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Reagan.
Here.
Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Here.
Awesome, thank you. Will you please stand and join me in welcoming Merrick Disming to the front as he leads us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, here we go, Merrick. Ready? We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's just gonna be proud.
Dr. Millen.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Latha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it's important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting outside of recognitions. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thanks, sir. All right, moving to 2 dot 01. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to recognitions and rewards, 3 dot 01.
Yes, good evening. Well, we have a jam-packed list of awards and recognitions tonight, so we will dive right in. To kick us off tonight, I'd like to invite Sarah Hoffman, Drew Keiter, and Jamie Trump to the front. In May of 2023, Dr. Jaeger and district representatives surprised these three incredible educators in their classrooms when they were named finalists for the Kansas Master Teacher Award established by Emporia State University. These three provide a standard for educators in our district. Sarah teaches second grade at Canyon Creek Elementary, Drew teaches physics at Olathe West High School, and Jamie teaches vocal music at Indian Trail Middle. We are so excited that out of these three finalists, Olathe had their first master teacher winner named in, I think, ten years. In February, Sarah Hoffman was surprised by a phone call in her classroom where she was notified that she had been named a 2024 Kansas Master Teacher winner. Her colleagues, Principal Christie James and district administrators, were there to celebrate the moment. According to Principal James, Sarah is engaging, energetic, compassionate-driven, loving, patient, and witty. She goes on to share that it is a blessing for students at Canyon Creek Elementary School to be educated by her. The 2024 master teachers were honored at the Kansas State Capitol last month, and just this week, Emporia State University welcomed them to their campus to celebrate Master Teacher Day. Please join me in congratulating Sarah, Drew, and Jamie as we celebrate our master teacher. If Christie James is here, Principal's here, if you would not, would like to come, jump up and get in the picture as well. That's all right. Brian, Christie, hop on up here. Wonderful. At this time, I'd like to re-invite Merrick Disming right back up to the front, along with Olathe East Principal Carrie Lane, Amy Hill, and Aubrey Gilhouse. We are very honored to have Merrick and his family of supporters here with us tonight, and I know Merrick's family is in the audience. Maureen's here, and she's one of our own as well. She works at Olathe Northwest in the art department. On March 14th, the National Federation of State High School Associations selected Merrick, a senior at Olathe East, as the 2024 recipient of the National High School Spirit of Sport Award. The Spirit of Sport Award recognizes the values inherent in high school, sports beyond winning and losing. The award was created in 2008 to recognize those individuals who exemplify the ideals of the spirit of sport that represent the core mission of education-based athletics. Merrick was selected for his incredible courage and determination to thrive through adversity, according to the Kansas State High School Activities Association. Merrick is a four-sport Special Olympics Unified Sports athlete. He participates in basketball, soccer, bocce, and bowling. Merrick has been a consistent performer on the three-time Unified Bowling Regional Championship team, which includes a third-place overall finish at the state meet in 2021. Throughout his academic and athletic career, Merrick has always persevered regardless of any challenges standing in his way. Back in August, Merrick was diagnosed with large B-cell lymphoma or non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Despite an exhausting treatment regimen, those around him say you would never know it. Merrick uses unified sports as a way of motivation to fight cancer. According to Olathe East Athletic Director Mike Wolgast, Merrick brightens the room when he walks in, inspires those he encounters, and makes Olathe East a better place. Merrick won the 2023 CASHA Spirit of the Sport Award, which made him eligible for the national recognition. His mother, Maureen, is so proud of her son and believes his journey is inspiring to everyone. In her words, "All she can do now is look at Merrick and smile because he has come so far." "We are so proud of Merrick. His courage and determination are unmatched, and those who get to be around him in school benefit from it each day." "We are also proud to share that as of today, Merrick is now cancer-free." Merrick, we are so proud of you.
One, one, two, three.
I know, everyone dry your eyes. I'm seeing some. That's awesome. Well, up next, I'm so excited to welcome our OATC Culinary State Champions up to the front. So if I could have Connor Wen, Kayden Sweeney, Brianna Keys, Molly Lewis, Nathan Scroggs, Micah Overton, Mauricia Diaz, come up to the front with your instructors, and Amy, come on up too. On March 20th, the Olathe Advanced Technical Center Culinary Program won the 2024 Kansas Pro Start Invitational, a premier high school competition focused on restaurant management and culinary arts. The OATC culinary team made up of Connor, Kayden, Brianna, Molly, and Nathan took home first place in the overall culinary competition. Kayden placed third in the best knife skills competition, and the OATC management team made up of Micah and Mauricia received a fourth-place finish in the management competition. The culinary competition highlights the team's creative abilities through the preparation of a three-course meal in 60 minutes. There is no room for error as they are evaluated on taste, skill, teamwork, safety, and sanitation. For the management competition, management teams develop a proposal for the next promising restaurant concept and present it to a panel of industry judges. Their problem-solving skills are tested as they quickly solve challenges faced by managers daily. Please join me in a big round of applause for these state champs. And if we have any families here, if you want to stand up, come get photos, you're welcome to do so. Thank you, guys. Well, I am so excited for this next recognition. I'd like to invite Eddie Schaefer, Dustin Pence, and Dana Davis to the front. These three are the theater directors at their respective schools, Mr. Schaefer at Olathe East, Mr. Pence at Olathe North, and Mrs. Davis at Prairie Trail. And they are here tonight as we honor the district-wide production of Disney's Frozen, the Broadway musical. Months after the highly successful production debuted at Olathe South High School, the Olathe Public Schools Theater Department was asked to perform their rendition of Frozen to open this year's Kansas Thespian Festival in Wichita. This was the first time that an entire district was invited to perform at the festival. Over 130 Olathe students performed in the show, including students from all five high schools, all 10 middle schools, and many of our elementary schools. Students even came back from winter break early for five days of rehearsals and two performances, then traveled to the festival a day early to make sure that everything was set up correctly and ready for an amazing performance. The performance received a standing ovation, and if you had an opportunity to see the show earlier this year, you know why. The students who performed in Frozen showcased true Olathe pride and represented the district so well on the state stage. So much work went into putting on a show of this scale, and it is our true honor to recognize Eddie, Dustin, and Dana tonight. They were key to ensuring this production's success, but there are many involved who are unable to be here tonight. Spring is a busy time for our athletics and activities. So I'd also like to publicly recognize Olathe South's David Hastings, Frontier Trail's Sarah Lamar, Olathe Northwest's Jason Hag, Olathe West's Alition Morris, and Olathe East's Gary Goddard for their work in making the magic come to life. They gave so much time to make this amazing show happen, and none of them were paid for what they did on this production. It was simply a labor of love and a gift to our district and community. We would also like to acknowledge the Women's Giving Circle and Olathe Public Schools Foundation for providing the grants to make it all possible. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful educators. Thank you, guys. Well, for our last recognition, I'd like to ask Chris Zuck up to the front. We are so proud to celebrate Chris, who was recently announced as the 2024 Area One Kansas Principal of the Year by the Kansas Principals Association. KPA is an organization of over 790 building-level leaders from across candidate, or from across Kansas. Candidates were nominated by their school communities and selected by a committee of their peers. They're evaluated on their school leadership, school improvement, dedication, professionalism, and service to students. Chris has shown great levels of commitment and dedication to Olathe Northwest and their community, and we are so thankful to have him in our district. Dr. Jaeger said it best, "Chris is a perfect example of what we look for in a school administrator. He is a strong instructional leader and is committed to developing trusted relationships within his community. Chris always goes the extra mile for the better of our students, staff, and community, and I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award." As the Area One Principal of the Year, Chris will advance to the next level of competition for the state honor. A committee will then select a state winner who will compete at the national level. Please join us in congratulating Chris for this amazing honor. Well, that concludes our awards and recognitions for the evening.
All right, we're moving on to 4 dot 01, our presentations for this evening. Our first one is coming from Amanda Honaker from the Olathe Transition and Support Program. So Amanda, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I am super excited to share about the amazing things that are happening at Olathe Transition Supports Program. We like to call that OTSP. So first, I wanted to give you a little foundation, a little bit about who we are and what we do. So we provide unique and specialized instruction for individuals with a delay in both cognitive functioning as well as adaptive skills. The individuals that we serve are between the ages of 18 and 21, and they demonstrate a need for training in the area of vocational skills beyond that 12th grade year. I like to put OTSP next to the Olathe Public Schools because our missions are very similar. So Olathe Public Schools, students prepared for their futures, and that goes right along with our vision and mission. So for us, our vision is to prepare students to lead independent, productive, and satisfying lives through collaboration with families, professional agencies, and community employers. We have a mission that we focus on each and every day, and that is to empower young adults to ultimately achieve their dreams for their future. When I look at OTSP, we think about three focus areas. I like to call them the pillars of the program. Our first one is employability skills, and we focus on work-based learning experiences as well as classroom instruction. Our second pillar is student independence. We focus on adaptive daily living skills as well as self-advocacy. And our third one is community access. That is an opportunity to explore and expand on their leisure activities as well as providing opportunities for community awareness. I want to talk about several of our, we call them, postgraduate programs that fall under the umbrella of that Olathe Transition Supports Program. The first one is ACCESS. ACCESS stands for, well, I'll start with, Olathe Really Likes acronym, so we're going to go through some. They're a little long, but I'll go fast. So ACCESS stands for Adult Career Community Education Services and Supports. The focus of this program is employability skills. The students within our program participate in two work-based learning opportunities each and every day, so they are very busy and they're very hard workers. The next one, oop, no, most important picture, so the students and staff at ACCESS. So we have some amazing teachers and job coaches that go to job sites with our students and support right alongside them, focusing on that student independence while fading back their support. It's a very nice balance, and they are amazing at it. My second program that I wanted to share about was FOCUS. This is FOCUS on Careers and Unique Skills. So the same pillars fall within this program. The little bit different, though, they participate in one work-based learning activity as well as one community collaboration class. Here's some amazing pictures as well. So the staff and students within the FOCUS program. These outstanding teachers and job coaches ensure that the young adults within the FOCUS program have the supports that they need to be successful within the community, focusing on that student independence and those self-advocacy skills. So they are amazing at making work seem very fun, which is a talent, definitely. The third experience I wanted to talk about was CONNECT. This one is collaborative opportunities for natural networking experiences and community transition. We like to just call it CONNECT. CONNECT has the focus of connecting to the community. This program is set up to serve individuals who have significant medical needs as well as multiple disabilities. So these individuals participate in still two outings every day, but it could be community collaboration classes or it could be work experiences. There are some of our amazing staff and students within the CONNECT program. These staff members, I would say, are phenomenal. They are very good at ensuring that all medical needs, all safety needs are addressed for every single student in this program across lots of environments. So it is a big task, but they do it with grace. It's very amazing. The last program that I wanted to talk about is RISE. This is our newest program. It is reaching independence through supported education. We did get a little bit shorter with those names, so that's a little nice, but we like to call it RISE. So RISE was set up to support individuals on the autism spectrum. These are young adults that require a highly structured environment and need specific supports to adjust, to address their individual needs. They as well fall into those three pillars. They have each day a work-based learning activity as well as a community collaboration activity. So they are very busy as well. Here's some amazing pictures of them. They even have a nice little thank you sign for you guys. So the exceptional teachers and job coaches in the RISE program are amazing at ensuring that those adequate supports are in place to promote student success. So our students are out and about a lot, and there are a lot of things that we need to make sure are in place to ensure their success, and they are phenomenal at doing that. I wanted to talk about that first pillar that I mentioned, and that's the employability skills. The one thing that I would say about this is that we love Olathe. So I am excited to say that we have over 100 community partners between our high schools and our postgraduate programs. So a few of the Legos or logos, I cannot put them all up there, but we are very blessed in Olathe to have many community partners that welcome our students into their business and provide them with an opportunity to practice valuable employability skills. So they are pretty amazing. Some pictures, we've got some individuals at Ace Hardware. We've got them at Price Chopper, Genesis, and Black Bear Diner, working very hard. We also have Salvation Army, Villa St. Francis, and IHOP. So lots of great businesses, and our students very much enjoy going out each day and really practicing those skills. Another fun thing about employability skills is each of our programs have a business. So we have the RISE program has Puzzle Pup Pastries. The ACCESS and FOCUS program have the Cup of Joy, Pop and Pals. And then we also have the CONNECT program, which is the Connect Snack Cart. I feel a little bit like the Shark Tank, but you have all been provided of a basket with those wonderful things inside so that you can learn a little bit about our businesses. I'm not asking for investments. You invest so much already, but I would love for you to have them. So the first one is the Puzzle Pup Patries, Pastries. So there is a dog treat. And so this, what is amazing about our businesses within our programs is they are completely student-led, which is phenomenal. So the students make the treats, package the treats, make the deliveries. They have an online store as well as a few sites around the district where they have displays set up so that they go each week, collect that money, and refill their displays. So they are very busy as well, and you might see them around in different places. The next one is a Cup of Joy. So the Cup of Joy is a coffee cart, a snack cart, and a craft cart. It's all-in-one. We go to the educational center once a week. You will see our very favorite customer up there. We go to the IRC once a week, and we go to the technology center once a week. The students set up the cart. They manage the inventory. They provide customer service. They manage the money during those transactions, and they also purchase all of the supplies. So we're very proud of that one as well. This one is Pop and Pals. So Pop and Pals is just at OTSP. It is a focus on customer service. So the students pop the popcorn, they bag the popcorn, they walk around and take orders, and they also deliver the popcorn. The next experience that I wanted to talk a little bit about, under that employee umbrella, is the alternative work experience. So this is what we like to call A. A partners with local businesses to bring meaningful jobs into a A partners with local businesses to bring meaningful jobs into a school setting. So sometimes we have students that might struggle out in the community, and we want to make sure they have those same vocational experiences. So A provides opportunities for students to focus on vocational skills within an environment that allows us to adjust to their individual needs. We have some amazing businesses in Olathe. Again, we have a t-shirt company we work with, Orthodontist, we work with Garmin, we do lots of Easter egg hunts, filling eggs for neighborhoods, and we also work with the Olathe Public Schools. Their graphics department is an amazing partner and gives us some different tasks that we can do to support the school district, which is pretty amazing. Here's some amazing pictures of some of our lovely friends doing some really hard work. We recycle lights, we work on books that are ready to be discharged, we do lots of amazing things, shred paper, we are very busy over there. Also at A, we have our own business as well, so this is called Awesome Notes, which I will share that you have one of those, and your nice little basket as well. So Awesome Notes is a card-making business. The students make the paper, which I can tell you is very difficult, I might have messed it up, once or twice, but I'm going to get it. It is all from scratch, so it is a very long process. They cut the shapes, they stamp, they make the designs on the cards. So it's really an awesome task. They make holiday cards, thank you cards, even opportunities to spread the joy is what we call that. The next pillar that I just wanted to touch on briefly was our community opportunities. So within our community opportunities, we call them community collaboration classes, and that focuses on those adaptive daily living skills as well as expanding those leisures and hobbies. So lots of fun classes that our students participate in each week. They change as our students' interests change, but we have some fun things like cooking in the kitchen, which is important, all the way to karaoke fun, which can be fun as well, and there is learning happening with that as well, but lots of fun. This is some pictures of our amazing community collaboration classes. We go to the library, we go to the community center, we go bowling, we also, like I said, we have cooking, we have the card class, we have book club, we have sports club, we have all kinds of amazing things. Here's another amazing picture of some students doing some fun things within their community collaboration classes. The last little highlight I wanted to provide was to our assisted transportation team. So I like to think of them as behind-the-scenes heroes. So these amazing drivers bring our students, take them home, they drive them around all day throughout all of Olathe, they get to know our students, they establish some amazing relationships with them. Sometimes they know things before I know them, and that's okay. But they are what I think of as a very vital piece to our program, and they kind of become part of our OTSP family, which is amazing. And the last thing that I think is amazing is as we are preparing students for their future, we are also building some amazing friendships. And so these are just some pictures of some fun things that happen in our program each and every day. And in the top right-hand corner, that was a young lady that chose our program from the Future Educators Program to come and spend some time with. So that was pretty amazing as well. So thank you so much for your time. I hope that you enjoy your small gifts, and maybe you can send them to someone else that you might know and spread a little joy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board, any questions of Amanda?
Mr. Boyd, I would like to make one comment. You saw a picture of me with two of my good friends here at the Education Center, and Colin, who was in that picture with me, knew he was going to be in the presentation tonight. And so when I talked to Colin yesterday, I told him I would give him a shout-out during the meeting. So Colin, I hope you're watching tonight, buddy. We appreciate your continued focus on Board of Education meetings. He watches a lot of them and has a lot of information about it, so I just wanted to give Colin and his friends a shout-out tonight.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Ms. Honaker, I also just wanted to say, not to one-up you, Dr. Jaeger, but your biggest fan is watching tonight, and I thought he was my biggest fan. And I, no, he is definitely yours. So Dominic Clark, hello. He is watching tonight because you are presenting, and I said, Dom, I've been on the board for over two years, and don't you watch every month? No, I've never watched.
I'm sure.
Okay, so it's all you. So you have lasting impact, including on our daughter, with the programs that you're facilitating, and how exciting to be in our new building in, what, another year, 25, 26?
Yes, we do have a new space. I didn't share that. We have a new space next year that we are so, so excited about, so yes.
Good, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Board, next we have an ELL update from Mike Filthrop.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm excited to share a little bit with you about our multilingual population, our enrollment trends, and also a really unique, amazing program that we have here in Olathe that gives me goosebumps every time I think about it. So my goal is to have you get goosebumps when I'm doing this, okay? Here in a little bit. All right, so I'm talking a little bit about our multilingual population in OPS. About 20% of our students are bilingual or multilingual, about 6,000 of them, which is really exciting. We have students that are going to be graduating Olathe Public Schools multilingual, and those opportunities for them is outstanding and exciting. So we have 87 different languages spoken by our students that represent over 101 different countries from around the world. So Olathe is definitely diverse, both linguistically and culturally. So when we think about the students that are learning English in Olathe Public Schools, we have about 6,000 of them that have another language at home and are learning English in school. However, we have about 3,000 of those students that when they enroll and they take a language assessment, which is required by the state, they show on their proficiency assessment that they might use some extra support in school. So out of 6,000 students that are multilingual, only about 3,000 of them may need some extra support. When we look at that type of support, it might just be that their classroom teacher is aware that, hey, they're learning English at the same time they're learning academics. So they might change instruction just a little bit for them knowing their needs. About 31%, though, of those 3,000 students require a little bit more assistance. So that's why we have an ELL program with ELL teachers and aides that work with that 31% of that total ELL population, okay? But out of the 6,000, very few of them actually need that extra support in our buildings. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our enrollment trends. So as you look, you can see the enrollment trend of our students that are ELL, English Language Learners, that require some type of extra support during the day. As you look in elementary, we continue to climb. Middle school continued to climb, but then this year, we went down just a little bit. And I want to point that out because I'm going to come back to that. When we think about our overall ELL, middle school population going down, but we're going to come back and speak about that in a minute. And then our high school population continues to increase. So our overall ELL population, the multilingual students that we welcome into our district that live in our community, is going up each year. Now I put down there the total multilingual population, because that also continues to increase. When students, at the end of the year, if they show that they needed some extra support with English, at the end of each year, they take an assessment called the KELPA, okay? And it shows us what is your growth in English. If they pass that, then they lose that tag of ELL, okay? So when you look at the, in total enrollment numbers of ELL, they're no longer counted in that. They are counted in our total multilingual, okay? So it's always important when you look at the overall enrollment trend of ELL to know that a lot of those students, at the end of the year, they take a language assessment, they do awesome, and they drop off that count, okay? So our total multilingual continue to increase as well. We welcome students throughout the year. We know that families change their jobs. Employers don't say, you cannot change your job until August or at the end of the year. We know that, right? So we have students coming in all year long. We have welcomed a total of 595 new students that are multilingual that need maybe a little bit extra support in school. And on the right side, you see total new to English, because it is a little bit different. Those students have not had English previously. So they're excited to go to school, they're ready to learn, but also they have to learn English at the same time. And so those are some extra challenges that they have that we work with. If you see there, we have about 344, so a little over half of the students we have moved into Olathe that are multilingual didn't have English when they started, okay? Now, let's look at those numbers if we break it down. So now we're going to look at the amount of students that are multilingual that have moved into our district, but when they move in, they're still learning English and have a low proficiency. So if you look at elementary, we had a large increase this year from 78 to 164 throughout our elementary schools. So even though that our elementary total enrollment of ELL just slowly increases, the amount of students moving in that may not have been in another school in the United States before coming to Olathe has increased, because a lot of our students that speak other languages may come over from Blue Valley, may come from Shawnee Mission, KCK, another state, but we also have students that are represented here that may be coming from a different country as well. So our middle school, now I'm coming back to that, because if you remember, our total population went down for middle school for ELL, but if you look at this, the amount of students that are new to English completely just about doubled, okay? And so those are some extra supports we're trying to put into our middle school to help, because that is something, you know, trying to learn biology and science in middle school at the same time learn a language can be a lot. So we put some extra supports in place for that. So kind of the summary is like I mentioned, each year, our Olathe community grows in multilingual students, and each year, the percentage of those multilingual students who are new to the English language also increases. So how we give support? So if you are a family that are moving into the Olathe area, and your children have had the opportunity to learn another language at home, and now will be learning English at school, if their language proficiency is lower in English, then we offer and let them know, we have certain schools that have ELL programs and ELL teachers. And we call those ELL site schools, because we have specialized English supports for those students. If they live in an area, let's say they live in the Heritage area, then that site school, Heritage, is a school where we provide those supports. But if they live in a different school area, let's say Broom, for example, we will let them know, you know what, we'll support your child here, absolutely, but we have extra English support at Heritage. If you'd like to go to that school, we can provide a little bit extra support for you for your language proficiency. Parents say, great, and so we provide transportation for them to go from what we call a feeder school over to a site school, okay? Sometimes families say, no, I really want to stay in this area. We say, okay, absolutely, and then we provide those supports to that school as needed. So here's an example of elementary site schools. So when you think about the schools that your children have attended, they may have had specialized ELL programs there or not. So in elementary, we have 15 schools. At secondary, five of our 10 middle schools offer that support, and three of our five traditional high schools offer that extra support. Now, our multilingual learners and ELL learners are throughout our entire district. It's just that the students that need maybe some extra English language support, and we offer those intensive English services and extra supports at the schools. So students are provided, of course, like all of our students, our multilingual students have access to our rigorous courses, have access to our programs, and are always integrated with their English-speaking peers as well. At high school, and it's some of our middle school programs, we may offer if a student enters in, so for example, four board members, if you had to go take biology for the first time in China, you didn't speak Chinese, how easy would that be? A little bit more difficult, but if you had to go into fourth grade and learn fourth grade science in Chinese, be a little bit easier, but if you go to high school, you have a lot more content and language. So at the high schools, we offer special core classes like biology, social studies, and math, that we teach those on grade-level standards, but also the classes are a little bit smaller, and the teachers are ELL teachers working with all of our ELL students. So our classes are very, very diverse, but they're able to really work with the students and know, okay, we're scaffolding for language as well. So they're in those classes until their English level is high enough to integrate out to their mainstream peers for those content courses. So we try to make sure we offer classes that they can be successful with English and also our curriculum. We also guarantee opportunities for all of our students. So if you're fortunate enough to move to Olathe and have another language already and learning English, we want to make sure you're also fortunate enough to have access to all of the great programs we offer in Olathe Public Schools, such as our 21st Century Programs. Okay, so that was our ELL support services and our multilingual students, one program that I work with. Another program I work with, and in a minute you'll find out kind of why I'm involved in that program, is a program that really focuses on students that might be, not identified, but carry the needs of students with limited or interrupted formal education, which is called SLIDE, okay? Another acronym that we have. And so when you think about this, let's say, for example, a student moves in from Oklahoma or Texas, okay? Nothing to do with language, native English speakers, they move in in seventh grade. We enroll them at Frontier. We assume you've been in school in Oklahoma or Texas, okay? I mean, those are crazy places, but we assume you've been in school, okay, at those two states. But what if you didn't have access to school? Maybe you couldn't get to school. Maybe your parents were not able to work, so you have had to work. So a seventh grader from Texas or Oklahoma or Florida or another state hasn't been able to go to school. They speak English and haven't been able to go to school. Well, we would have a lot of supports we'd have to put in place. We'd have math support, science support, because they haven't been in school. Maybe they've never been in school. That would be a lot of work for that student, so we'd want to support them, okay? Well, in the United States, we don't find that a lot, because there are laws that say you have to go to school. There's transportation laws, you have to assist students to get to school. We have that in the United States. Not all countries have that, okay? We could, for example, parts of England, English-speaking Africa, different places, when they move in, maybe we have a situation where they haven't had formal education, but they speak English. We have a student from Australia come over, haven't been able to go to school, they speak English, that's great, don't have to worry about any type of language barrier or an extra layer, we can just work on academics, okay? If they haven't been able to go to school. Well, English isn't the main language in all the countries around the world, is it? So we have some students that have not been able to go to school, who move to the Olathe area, go to our schools, and they've not had the opportunity to have schooling. And they might be from a country where English is not spoken. So now, we have the opportunity to, hey, we can work with you, we're going to work with your English, and we're going to teach you academics so you can graduate. So that program is what I'm going to talk to you about. It's not a lot of students. The reason why I'm involved in the program is that we don't get too many of these students from Australia and England, get them from other parts of the world, so we also have that extra layer of language on top, if that makes sense, okay? So let's talk a little bit about that. Just gave you some idea as far as, again, SLIDE is students with limited or interrupted formal education, they're students who have limited or interrupted education prior to enrolling in the district. UNESCO, United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization, estimates we have about 250 million children around the world that does not have the opportunity to go to school, okay? And we have been fortunate to welcome about 120 of those students. Again, it's a small population of students, but it's students that have not had that opportunity to go to school. My son sometimes wakes up and says, do I have to go to school? And I say, son, you get to go to school. So then I get on YouTube and show him videos around the world, like, we're all around the world, he goes, Dad, I don't want to see all those videos again, I'll get up and go to school. So I, so some students don't have that opportunity to go to school until they come to Olathe, and we're excited to be able to offer them that opportunity. So when they're in school, regardless of their grade, okay, these are the supports on the left-hand side we will provide them, okay? They may need English language support, depending from where in the world they're from. We know that they have lack of formal education, so maybe they've not been in school for three years, four years, forever, and so they may need English language support depending where they're from. If they're from England, then we don't have to worry about that or give those type of supports, but sometimes they're not. We'll give math and reading intervention support, and depending on their resource needs, we also will provide them with clothing, school supplies, and food. It really varies, because we want to make sure they have their basic needs so they can be successful in school. Now, if they are a high school age and they enroll, and they have not been in school, and let's say they enroll, but they're a freshman age, okay, well, you're a freshman, you're starting with zero credits, but so are all your other peers that are freshman age. We're going to support you with English. We're going to support you with English and academics, and we're going to get you to graduate. Awesome. But what if they're the age of a sophomore, a junior, or a senior, and they don't have any credits? So now, like, okay, we have extra support for you. And so we have a special program called Cornerstone that I'm very excited to talk to you about tonight. That is just for that. It's for students who enroll, who are older than a freshman, who haven't had that opportunity where they're coming from to go to a high school equivalency and get credits. So Cornerstone is a program that offers a unique path to graduation or GED completion for high school students who did not have the opportunity for consistent schooling before joining our Olathe community. That program is run by Leah Yates and also Sheila Meeker. She's one of the, the teachers that support that program. So that student up there, I'm really excited to share about him, and I will in just a minute. Add a different slide for anticipation. Okay? So Cornerstone program. If they enter and remember they're entering in high school, older than a freshman with no credits. Okay? So at the high school, we offer the sheltered classes that are those ELL classes because the majority of them also need some assistance with English, okay? They speak another language and they're working on their second or third or sometimes fourth. How many of us are working on our second, third, or fourth language? Okay? These kids are great. And then also, we provide some teacher or aid support. That last one there, the monitoring is the most important part. And that's what the program coordinator really works with. Is she makes sure they're there every day at school. If they're not at school, she calls home, she finds out why, she goes to their house, she finds out why aren't you at school. Because remember, if these students haven't been going to school, it's difficult and they may not want to go to school. When you take a vacation for two weeks or over the summer, do you want to go back to work? No, because you, it, it's difficult. And so, and if they're, and if they don't have the literacy skills, it's difficult. So she monitors them, she says, "Hey, you have opportunities, Olathe is going to give those to you." And so it's been very successful, and I'll share a little bit about the data in a minute. So they'll go through high school until their age cohort graduates. So if they came in as a sophomore age, we still enroll them as a, as a freshman. Because for the state of Kansas, you now have four years to graduate. So we're going to make sure you get those four years. If we enroll you as a sophomore, you have three. So we'll enroll you as a freshman. How, so you have those four years, but it's only on paper, okay? And so, once your age cohort, though, graduates, you may still be on paper as a junior, as a sophomore. And so then, you're going to go over to Mill Creek. And we have a special classroom there run by Leah Yates and Sheila Meeker, where you get individualized instruction in small groups. Also, it's a half-day program. And it's half-day because many of these students have to work for themselves and their family. And if we said you had to go all day, they would drop. So again, we create this program for the needs of the students in mind. So now, back to Luis. So we were very excited. He moved to Olathe from Mexico at the age of seventeen. He did not have any formal credits at all. So very high risk to drop out. If he'd entered high school and said, "Hey," and we told them, "You have four years, and actually you have one, if you're seventeen, why, you wouldn't have been able to stay or graduate." But through this program, he was. He was able to get his GED and is now off working. We're very excited. So here are some of the demographics for the high school SLIFE. Remember, these are students who entered in at higher than a freshman age. So currently, we have seventy-two students in the Cornerstone program who enrolled in high school with fewer credits than their age like peers. So a little bit ago, I say, we had about a hundred-and-ten students that would qualify as SLIFE, who didn't have yet opportunity for consistent education. So the other, about thirty students are in our elementary and middle schools, okay? It's the seventy-two that are with our Cornerstone because we focus on that high school graduation. Thirty new students have enrolled, so we've welcomed thirty of those students who didn't have that opportunity for formal education, but they can get it here in Olathe. Thirty of them enrolled this year. The average education prior to coming to Olathe is about sixth grade, okay? That's the average age of those, of those seventy-two students. Three of our students had never been to school before. So again, these are students at a high school age, had never been to school. That is a culture shock. Now, learning how to read and saying, "We're going to help you graduate." Okay? To give you those opportunities that you'll have leaving Olathe Public Schools with a diploma or GED. Twenty-seven to seventy-two students read below the fifth grade level in their native language, because they've not been in school. So we're really working with them and helping them become more proficient readers. The average age has been seventeen. So we welcome these students. Okay? Guess what? Twenty-three on track and are going to graduate this year. We're very excited. Last year, seventeen students graduated. And I want to also say, these are students that are high-risk for dropout, okay? Around the country and the state, you don't see students graduating with this type of support, okay? Our retention rate with the public schools is eighty-nine percent for our SLIFE students. I want to applaud our teachers in our high school because, remember, they're with the high school teachers, and then they work with, with Leah. Eighty-nine percent is amazing. Amazing. Did you get chills? Because I did. I did. It is an amazing accomplishment. And ninety-three percent course passing of all of the students. So the students that come in, that have lack of formal education, who are already starting in with that extra struggle and challenge, we are getting them to be successful and passing their classes so they can graduate. So very excited about our Cornerstone program. We continue to have a commitment to all students. It doesn't matter where you're from, it doesn't matter the languages that you speak, it doesn't matter what education you, you've had. Olathe will embrace you, and we will help you to graduate and be successful, because that's our. Any questions?
Board, any questions? Dr. Ickovich?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. First, first, I would ask the graduation requirements for these students. Are those modified, adjusted?
We use the state twenty-one graduation requirement. And so, but they still graduate with the state requirements.
And so then, they graduate with an Olathe Public School diploma?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we are very proud to offer that to them.
Mrs. Reagan?
Well, I heard this presentation first at the Site Council, and it gave me goosebumps then. And now, it, just seeing the numbers is amazing. And then, you know, when you hear how truly diverse our district is, and then you think about the types of populations that, you know, culturally, just the different values we place on education because of having those needs met. I mean, I don't know that I'd ever thought that much about kids not having been in school. Like, you know there are kids that don't. But hearing it and then realizing that we have this many children in our district whose school has not been a commonplace in their life. This is amazing. And I think that, you know, the, the ability to serve kids where they are and to also then remove them from the, the high school buildings when it's an age-appropriate time, to keep them having that kind of agency and independence. Because I also imagine, you know, if they're twenty-two and still in the building, that could create an odd dynamic. So I also appreciate the attention to making sure that we're fitting the students' needs as they just grow up as human beings. Now, I noticed that you're the Director of Language Acquisition. Do you also have a hand in our immersion programs?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, I do. So I work with all of our language programs. And so our dual-language immersion programs at Manchester Park and Black Bob, also our world language programs of our students in middle school and high school that did not have the opportunity to learn another language at home, are now learning another language in school. And so, for example, our Spanish, French, ASL, different programs that we have. German, I work with those programs as well. So any opportunity to learn a language in Olathe, I help facilitate that.
Well, and that's just amazing. I mean, I just, you know, having children learn languages at an early age is so impactful for their lives. And it does go both ways. You know, we, we have a lot of pride in the immersion programs, but I do think that we don't often think about the SLIFE kids. And so you sharing this information, I mean, what a point of pride for our district. Covering kind of language, language acquisition from both ends in regardless, you know, regardless of what position you are in life for what your experiences are in school. I am just amazed. Like, I have been thinking about your presentation since Site Council, because it is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Babbitt, did you have a question?
I, I was just going to ask, could you share the videos that you're showing your son? Because my son needs those.
Yes, I can send them to you. There's one that I show him. He's like, "Dad, I've seen this a hundred times." I go, "But you still tell me you have to go to school." There's an area, and I don't remember where in the world, but it, the divide, there's two sides, and it's divided by a river. And so in order to go to school, it would take them hours and hours and hours and hours to go around. So they actually will use this rope that goes from the top, the, the top of a mountain down, and they put their child in like a bag and tie it. And they send them down, and then that way they can actually get to school. And then they do have to walk all the way back around up. It takes them half the day. And it's one of those things where they value it that's the only way that they can actually get them to school because of where they live. So he has seen that one many times. And then I say, "Now you can walk to school." So it's great.
I think my eight-year-old needs to see it, so thank you.
Yeah. Gives you an awareness.
I, I just want to brag on Mike for a quick second. You know, he, he came to me when I was still in Learning Services and was really concerned about students who were dropping out and us not meeting their, their need as a school system. And the Cornerstone program that he shared with you tonight is really Mike's work and working with the other staff members that support that program. And, you know, Mike is fun to listen to, and he has a lot of enthusiasm. But really, to come up with an innovative program that is truly nowhere else around to get kids on the right path for high school graduation and future-like success is something that we can be very proud of in Olathe. And a lot of that has to do, most of that has to do with the vision of Mike. So I did want to recognize that tonight, too.
Thank you for all, all your support.
Becky?
I was going to say, that was actually going to be one of my questions. It's, is there comfortable programs to this in any other school district? And it sounds like it's not.
Not that I'm aware of.
That's amazing to have that progress of graduation rate based on, you know, what you've developed over the years. So thank you very much. I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Johanne, I said Becky, so.
It's okay.
Board, any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments, five dot zero one. Mrs. Steele?
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is related to the business this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and relationship to the district. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to apologize in advance. We're going to mess up some folks' names, but feel free to correct me when you take the podium. Fabiola Collin?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fabiola Collin. Trabajo en el distrito por once años. Estoy aquí representando a mi unión, CWA Local 6400, Trabajadores Escolares Unidos de Olehca. Soy el custodiano principal de Olehca West. Tengo dos hijos en las escuelas públicas de Olehca. Mi hija está en Olehca West y mi hijo está en Oregon Trail. Gracias al superintendente y a la junta directiva por escucharnos.
Good evening. My name is Fabiola Collin, and I have worked in the district for eleven years. I am here representing my union, CWA Local 6400, Olehca School Workers United. I am the lead custodian at Olehca West. I have two children in the Olehca Public Schools. My daughter's at Olehca West, and my son is at Oregon Trail. Thank you to the superintendent and the school board for listening to us.
Estamos formando una unión para obtener mejores beneficios, salarios más altos y más respeto. Estoy aquí con mis compañeros de trabajo para pedirle a la junta escolar que se adquiera la ley de negociación del sector público de Kansas y reconozca nuestro citicato. Esperamos trabajar con ustedes para hacer nuestras escuelas que sean lo mejor posible.
We are forming a union for better benefits, higher salaries, and more respect. I am here with my coworkers to ask the school board to opt-in to the Kansas Public Sector bargaining law and to recognize our union. We look forward to working with you to make your schools the best that they can be.
Como custodios principales, somos responsables de nuestros edificios y nuestros compañeros de trabajo. Aunque no tenemos mucha responsabilidad, nuestros salarios no lo reflejan. Tenemos mucha esperanza para todos los concejos podamos establecer la escala salarial que refleje nuestros años de servicio al distrito para las responsabilidades de nuestros trabajos.
As lead, as lead custodians, we are responsible for our buildings and our coworkers. Even though we have a lot of responsibility, our wages do not reflect that. We are hopeful that for all custodians, we can establish a pay scale that, a pay scale that reflects our years of service to the district and all the responsibilities of our jobs.
Gracias por escucharnos. Estamos entusiasmados de luchar juntos con ustedes para garantizar el estado de Kansas financie completamente nuestras escuelas.
Thank you for listening to us. We are excited to fight alongside with you to ensure that the state of Kansas fully funds our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Araceli Carrillo?
Buenas noches, señor Jaeger y junta escolar. Agradecemos la atención que nos han brindado para presentar algunos puntos laborales.
Good evening, Mr. Jaeger and the school board. We appreciate the attention you have given us to present some labor points.
Mi nombre es Araceli Carrillo. Vivo en Olehca, Kansas. He trabajado para el distrito de Olehca diecisiete años. Estoy aquí representando a mi unión, CWA Local 6400, Olehca School Workers United. Soy concejal, concejero principal en la escuela primaria Norview.
My name is Araceli Carrillo. I live in Olehca, Kansas. I have been working for the school district for seventeen years. I am here representing my union, CWA Local 6400, Olehca School Workers United. I am a lead custodian at Olehca Northview Elementary.
Estoy aquí para pedirles que reconozcan nuestra unión. Solíamos tener dos personas de ocho horas por la noche, y ahora solo tenemos una persona de ocho horas por la noche y otra de cuatro horas por la noche. Y esto ha creado más trabajo para nosotros. Sin ningún aumento salarial, actualmente trabajamos más, nos cansamos más, y no recibimos ingresos extra. Tenemos que trabajar tiempo extra para poder cubrir nuestros gastos de manutención.
I am here to ask you to recognize our union. We used to have two eight-hour people at night, and now we only have one eight-hour, one eight-hour night person and one four-hour person. This has created more work for us with no increase in pay. We currently work more, get more, get more tired, and we do not receive extra income. We have to work extra time to be able to cover our living expenses.
En mi caso, estoy intentando ahorrar para comprarme un carro. Mi auto se averió, y actualmente mi hijo me lleva y me trae de trabajo. También me apoya para cuidar a mi esposo, ya que hace seis años sufrió un derrame cerebral y quedó discapacitado. Mi costo de vida es muy alto. Mi alquiler es de mil quinientos, luz, quinientos dólares. Mi seguro, ciento sesenta, celular, ochenta, internet, setenta y...
From seventy-four classmates at Broome that want to keep their computer class. In conclusion, I understand if you don't agree with me, but at Broome, we are taught habits of leadership, including finding our voice. So today, I am using my voice and I hope you'll listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. That was a great job. Our next speaker is Kinsley Pratt.
Hi, my name is Kinsley. I go to school here in this district. I am ten years old and I am autistic and technically disabled. I want to talk about my new school. My new school is the safest place for me. My teacher is the best and offers me lots of support. I also have a great resource help. My old school was the worst because the principal would put me in a seclusion room and wouldn't contact my mom. I tell all my friends that don't go to my new school that they should come to it because that's the best school. I love my lunch buddy in my new school because she gives me... Because she is nice, cool, and kind. Board members, you should have... You should have my principal and IEP team at my new school teach my old school how to work with kids like me. My advocate helped me get to a new, safe school. She advocated to identify my learning disabilities, help the team to collaborate for my support, and encourages me to use my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Kinsley. Great job. Our next speaker is Rachel Pratt.
My name is Rachel Pratt. I'm a resident of this city and I have five kids enrolled in the district. As it is Autism Awareness Month, one of the many things that continues to keep me up at night is the IEP process and what it's like for us parents to get their child with significant diagnoses evaluated and screened by the district, to identify their learning disabilities, provide appropriate accommodations, identify the child properly, and so much more. This process can certainly be compared to a scavenger hunt. Teachers have discreetly said the request has to be made in writing, but they aren't supposed to tell us parents that. These are words said in private at conferences or by phone calls. Some of us get emails daily about issues at school, concerns with academics, problematic behaviors, bullying, refusing to do work, or complying to teachers' demands. Requests are made in writing and the results come back by your professionals. The results have ranged anywhere from the following: They have normal, messy boy or developing girl handwriting. Although scores are low average, there are no concerns for learning disabilities. Math is hard for all students. School is more structured at school than at home, and so many more reasons. Parents leave these meetings in tears, feeling hopeless, feeling gaslit by professionals, and lost on how to get their kids' needs met. Doctors, psychiatrists, and other medical professionals, recommendations are being ignored, parent concerns are being ignored, your professionals fail to communicate and collaborate with each other when the evaluation results are reviewed. Our children are being diagnosed with PTSD due to trauma inflicted on our children at the hands of the district, bullying, and failing to meet our kids' needs. I also want to make it known that our kids' negative experience and treatment are not a perception. It is their reality. For some, their everyday life is trying to survive. My child's inability to access educational curriculum due to her learning disabilities cannot be a superpower if her cape to fly hasn't been provided. Start providing their capes and maybe they can learn to fly utilizing the very superpowers that you guys are describing.
Patty Lander.
Three kids through the district. I'm very glad to see the classified staff here and I truly hope they continue coming every single month. It is vital that you know what is embedded in the curriculum and how things are taught and where they come from. I plan to check out the new health curriculum for high school. It's supposed to be available at the district office. I was also notified that kids will be having health class and PE this week. I really hope it's the eighties curriculum rather than the comprehensive sex ed from Planned Parenthood that includes kink. It's unacceptable for any age of child. If you don't believe me, check out Canada. There are terms that no parent of any child ever wants a school to put in their child's brain even if they're eighteen. Use logic in decision-making, please. Does it make sense or do I just want to check the Castle compliance box? Write your own story and don't take the money. School districts, including Olathe, are supposed to be locally controlled, but we are not due to much funding with puppet strings attached from Fed, Ed, and corporatist benefactors with an agenda. There are expensive compliance hoops as well. The UN wants more social-emotional learning in order to reduce dissonance in children so they will accept whatever idea is given to them. Where will the innovators be when all are equitable thought? SEL does not help as the past ten years of experiments show. We have nothing good to show for it in Olathe since they were implemented. The math bar has been lowered twice. We also do not want more experiments in data collection on kids and the new psychometric assessments from which Olathe took two-hundred thousand dollars. The state board voted to approve it without any information given to them. Programs for at-risk students are supposed to pass a litmus test that they actually show that they work. The Kansas State Department of Ed went through all the programs for at-risk students, I think they went through all of them, and threw out about forty of them out as inadequate. How about we do the same for Castle-aligned programs? I wonder what the data would look like now for behavior and achievement. Teachers say that student behavior is a reason for them leaving the district. The state superintendent allowed Kansas to be an experiment with SEL along with Delaware and Wisconsin in 2015. Could have been earlier, I'm not sure, but the document called "A Vision for Integrating SEL with Career and Workforce Development for Students" in 2015. SEL is a massive moneymaker for companies that produce the school resources on the taxpayer dime. Castle claims that SEL gives an eleven-to-one return on investment while ignoring the academics' behaviors and mental health decline since it was forced. Where is the evidence that transformational SEL actually works for anything good? Castle cites itself as the evidence. What are the goals? We hear constantly that student behavior is poor. Since Olathe's been utilizing Castle, does it show any success? I suppose that depends on what the actual goals are. The UN says it's for reducing dissonance. I saw that the board will be attending the NASB conference next week in New Orleans. I don't know if you're going to it, but Tim Schreiber of the Kennedys is a keynote speaker. He's the head of Castle, and he says that... Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board, that concludes our public comments. We'll take a six-minute recess and come back at seven fifteen. All right, we'll call our meeting back to order. Mrs. Steele.
Dr. Yeager, on the heels of public comments, I wasn't planning on it, but I wondered if we do have an all-district PD day coming up for professional development, and I think it's... Our district-wide focus is going to be on neurodiversity. I wondered if we could have somebody come up and just talk about that.
Sure. Dr. Reeves, I think, would be able to do it. I'm not seeing Aunt Jeanette at the moment, but I think she could probably pop up too if needed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'd be happy to share a little bit about the work that we've been doing. Last, you may recall last fall during a presentation, Ms. Fulman talked about bringing some professional learning around neurodiversity to our district. And so, beginning last fall, about seven or eight of us started a committee weekly to begin doing some reading and studying, to put some training together. That was all centered around getting a consistent message to all staff across the system. In January, we provided just a little bit of oversight and asked for input from staff to get some idea of things that they felt like they needed to know around neurodiversity for a much larger training that we will provide in April on the nineteenth. And again, it will be provided across the system all at the same time that morning, and our entire Learning Services Department will be helping facilitate those sessions in small groups by department so that we make sure we are able to get kind of a consistent message out and build some foundation for all staff. We've worked for the last three months in our Learning Services Department to bring that training to all of the folks that will be helping facilitate that. And again, it really is to build that foundation to start. A few things that we then also have in the works for this summer in our summer conference, we'll have additional sessions that kind of move beyond where we start in April. And then, next fall, we have a symposium scheduled in September where staff have the opportunity to pick some breakout sessions, kind of self-directed learning, and then we'll also have some opportunities during that as well as a follow-up. So they'll leave on the nineteenth with some information, but they'll also leave with some strategies to be able to go back and use in their classrooms throughout the rest of the year. So a lot of time and effort been put in over the last several months, and we're excited to bring it to the district and think it will be great for all of our staff and students.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, board, moving on to action consent, six dot zero one through six dot zero nine. Any questions on any of that? I entertain motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered six point zero one to six point zero nine as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Yurkovich and a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. All right, action bids, contracts, and agreements. I know we have some questions on seven dot zero four and seven dot zero five. Board, any other agenda items we need to pull out from that section? All right, if it's all right with you all, we can take the questions on oh four and oh five and then vote on all of them together if that's all right. All right, Dr. Yurkovich.
I would ask Mr. Palangi to perhaps share a little bit more information about those two items, the type of services, when and how they might be utilized, and any history that's brought us to this point.
Sure, thank you. And good evening, and thank you for the questions. So we have two on-call proposals that are being presented tonight, one for on-call landscaping services and the other ones to help maintain our bio-retention basins or detention basins, as we call them, that have been required to be put into new construction from the city probably back from about two thousand nine. So, some varying degrees, we have utilized their services before for each one of these just to kind of help supplement our grounds departments. Currently, with a little context right now, we're down seven members of our grounds department. We maintain fourteen hundred acres, so that equates to about over, you know, six hundred million square feet that we maintain, so right now we're at sixteen. But we're also in the thrusts of working on our elementary school playground projects, and that group has been vital to help support those as well. So what we wanted to do was to use the on-call measures to help support us in times of need when we want to do that. Currently, the landscaping services would be your standard mowing, landscaping bed cleanups and bed plantings, shrub trims, sprinkler maintenance, aeration seeding, weed treatment, tree shrub control, tree and shrub insect treatment, and leaf cleanup as well to help prepare our grounds so they're always looking good and we don't get any calls from the city if we have any landscaping to attend to. Our bio-retention maintenance is, again, it's required by the city. It's storm water prevention basins, so it holds water for a certain period of time then it goes into storm systems. And for those, we have to... There's shrubs that are inside those. We have to help maintain those and keep those to an adequate height, remove litter and debris that could cause them to not perform the way they are. We always have to replace dead plants, do erosion control on those, remove weeds, and inspect the inflow points of those as well to make sure that the stormwater is going into them. Currently, right now, for our landscaping, we're looking at using the services for about anywhere from nine to twelve of our locations to help supplement our grounds group. And then, for the bio-retention maintenance, we're looking at the company to help us assist in all the different measures that I talked about earlier. And currently, we have about fifteen locations that we have, certain various sizes of these bases.
Thank you. I appreciate the background.
No problem. Thank you.
Board, any other questions on bids, contracts, and agreements? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve action items seven dot zero one through seven dot one four.
Second.
I did it right, guys.
We have a motion by Mrs. Reagan and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to eight dot zero one. I actually have a question. John? And I'm going to apologize in advance because I didn't give you a heads up.
It's okay.
But on these fee increases, what would happen if the board was to decide not to increase these fees?
If you decide not to, the instructional material fee goes to our textbook fund, which is what funds our instructional materials, textbooks, online resources, and our demand is far higher than even the hundred twenty dollars we'll fulfill, so it'll be more general fund dollars having to go supplement the materials that we buy.
Again, apologies, but can you just estimate the amount that these fees generate?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How much do these fees generate so we don't have to take it from our general fund? What's the total fee that we capture as a district from the instructional fee?
It's about two and a half million dollars.
One thing I may point out that you'll see on future actions, just to John's point about what we bring in, not covering, you know, in terms of our instructional materials fee, there's a future action item for a new elementary ELA resource that is well beyond two and a half million dollars just for that one single purchase, just as a comparison as you look at these fees.
Board, any questions on eight dot zero one?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on eight dot zero one.
I move to approve the recommended student fees and miscellaneous charges for the twenty-four and twenty-five school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mrs. Johann.
Mr. Kuhn. Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
No.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Motion carries five two. All right, board, we have a lot on future action. I do want to call out nine dot zero one. I'm looking at this agenda item. I don't know if I've ever seen... Oh, see, I'm sorry, nine dot zero two. The amount of folks listed having a handle on approving this resource. Dr. Yeager, can you just talk to us and give us some background in how many folks were involved and how long? Because looking at this, it seems like a heavy lift.
Yeah, I'll start talking, and then Dr. Reeves or somebody else will come up here and answer the question. But, you know, one of the things that's always been important to us as a school system, especially when we have a large curriculum resource adoption, like what's here for future action, is to really get broad input from our staff, to really make a decision that not only supports the learning standards that are in place by our Board of Education, but also best practice, but also a resource that meets the needs of our staff in terms of easability of use, you know, the ability for them not to have to spend hours and hours and hours planning those sorts of things. And I'm really proud of the process and the work that Dr. Reeves and his team have gone through to do this, and with that, he's standing there, so he'll save me at this point. Thank you.
Would you like me to start with just a little bit of an overview of kind of the process we've used? Start there. So I would say about a year ago or last spring, we started really with a listening tour that involved our secondary ELA coordinator and lots of staff at the Learning Services Department, where we brought staff in from all over the district just to listen and hear about the things that they were hoping for in a resource, looking for in a resource that served them, would serve their students. And out of that came a list of things that really then guided our work moving forward and the review of looking at some of the resources that were available, looking at what would meet our needs and meet those needs of the priorities that came from staff, and then things that wouldn't, you know, wouldn't meet our needs. From there, there was a pretty comprehensive review of quite a few resources, and it was narrowed down to a group, and then a committee was formed that included staff from all grade levels, all buildings, all demographics, sizes. We really tried to have a representative group with our title staff, our ELL teachers, so that we had all those folks at the table looking at those resources to make sure that what we were looking at was going to meet the needs of kids. And so, that process took place. We had two resource companies come in and present. There was an opportunity for the district to create a rubric to make sure that we were really looking at what it is that we were looking for in a resource and not get caught by the bells and whistles, so to speak, of a resource. Sometimes there's a lot of things that are flashy and shiny and look great, but making sure that they were really meeting the needs. And so, the rubric then kind of guided which resource we moved forward with, and then there was an opportunity for staff, all elementary staff certified staff, to then vote kind of on what their preference was of the final two resources that were brought. I believe in the board report, we listed all the people that were on the committee that worked through that process. I would also add that, you know, in looking at the resource, so several years ago, we received a grant. We started down the road with some work around literacy just in general, and then there was, of course, the state mandate for dyslexia that then carried some of that work forward. And we have adopted over the course of previous years some resources that met the needs of those mandates. And so, when we looked at a resource, we weren't looking for a resource that would replace some of those. We have those in place. We've worked very hard to get those in place and train staff and make sure that they're being used with fidelity. So, we were careful to look at a resource that provided the part that we needed related to influencing comprehension as opposed to maybe perhaps the phonics piece. to fluency comprehension, as opposed to maybe perhaps the phonics piece of that. That was an aspect that was a little bit different this time around, I think, than our previous adoption. It's fourteen, if I'm not wrong, fourteen, a long time.
Thank you. Yeah, looking at this, it just looked like a heavy lift, so.
It is.
Appreciate the background and never surprised by the thoroughness that our staff does. Thank you, sir.
Brett, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I had a couple of conversations with people in the community, staff members, community members, about this resource as it was going through, and as coincidence would have it, a very dear friend of mine was on a curriculum selection committee in my hometown, where she's been a second grade teacher for a very long time, and when I was getting questions, it was so amazing to go and ask her about these questions, just from her professional experience. She's been piloting this curriculum and loves it, and I, you know, I think about all the voices that are listed, all the different buildings that are listed, and then to have just, you know, the outside type person who has the same kind of commitment to literacy, phonics, fluency, and to hear that the resource that we landed on was one that she's like, "Well, make sure you guys are thinking about this one," and I'm like, "All right," and I just kind of kept that to myself, and then, as these conversations were unfolding, it was really neat to see, just, you know, and hearing the positives on this resource, and just from various voices too. So, thank you for your hard work. I know this is not a decision that is made quickly or lightly.
Well, a lion's share of it was done by a lot of staff and learning services and staff across the district.
I would add one quick thing too, and it's on your board report, but just in case people don't see that, you know, anytime the board adopts a curriculum resource, we always have it available for public to view at the IRC, and that's certainly the case with this as well. That's just the building, two doors north of where we are here at the education center. But with this, also, our elementary ELA coordinator, Lori Winter, is also hosting an open house evening where she'll be available to answer questions, people, I think, from the publishing company will be available to answer questions, and that's really an intention for our public who's interested in seeing the resource, to come and see it and be able to look at it and those kinds of things as well. And I'm sure we'll push this information out a little bit if we've not already, but that will be April tenth at the IRC, room four ten, from four o'clock to six o'clock. So, anyone who's interested is certainly invited to join our Learning Services team just to explore the resource that night.
Board, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, sir.
Great.
All right, moving on to information written reports, there's three of those there for boards and members to look at and read.
Mr. President, can I?
Mrs. Steele?
Regarding the information written, I know we are coming up on the culmination of all of the construction at Santa Fe, and I didn't want it to get lost next month in May, when we have so much to talk about, and could we ask Mr. Palangi to come up and just tell us a little bit about the wrap-up of that big, awesome project?
Yes, thank you. We are coming up to a pretty big milestone coming up here in the middle of April, we'll reach temporary certificate of occupancy time on the project, and that's kind of key for us, where we take possession of the building. We are ready to start moving in furniture and start making plans towards the end of the school year, when the existing Santa Fe Trail is finished, so we can start moving items over from the existing building into the new building. So, it is a pretty good time right now. We just finished all of our asphalt pavement in the parking lots and got those stripes, so we're able to, we're starting landscaping, we're finishing all just like touch-up paint, we started up the pool and had owner training this past week on that, got the last coat on the gym floors that are in there, so it's a pretty exciting time when you go through that right now. So, it's with nothing in it, it's kind of in a different state, but we're ready to start packing that thing full here coming up real soon.
It's been really fun to watch the process, and I know you've been, it's taken a lot of your time and a lot of people's time, so thank you for sharing that, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Boyd?
Yeah.
Dr. Yurkovich?
I would also like to make sure people know, on April twenty-fourth, there is an event to kind of close out the existing building. From six to seven, there's an event for staff and student alumni in the courtyard, and at six forty-five, some comments will be made, and then, beginning at seven, the existing building will be open for people to kind of take a last walk-through for those who have connections. So, that's April twenty-fourth at the existing facility.
All right, moving on to topics for discussion, eleven dot zero one, I believe, Dr. Yeager, you want to get us started?
Yeah, I would be happy to get us started, and then certainly any questions that you all have, I can try to answer, and if there's questions I don't know the answer to, we will quickly try to get those or be prepared at the next board meeting if there's some questions that you have. As you know, CWA, the Communication Workers of America, has approached the Board of Education to be recognized as exclusive bargaining representative for our classified staff in the district. At this time, I think it's probably most clearly for our grounds, maintenance, and custodial staff, but we have, as you know, heard from other employee groups that are part of our classified group as well in our district. A little bit different than what we're used to in terms of bargaining, if you will, with the Teachers Association that is done in school districts. The board's not legally required to recognize a union, if you will, for our classified staff. There are places around our state where that happens, so it's certainly not an uncommon practice and what have you, but it's important to note that, under Kansas law, that's the Public Employer Employee Relations Act, it is up to the Board of Education to opt into negotiations and recognition with a classified union. So, that really means that it's optional for public schools in the state of Kansas. You know, we've had several questions from employees, one is, is it optional if we join or don't join, and that kind of thing, and the first answer to that is, it's always optional if a staff member chooses to join a union of any kind, that's completely up to them. But the board really has to make the decision, you know, through thoughtful consideration, questions, if they want to enter into what's called a neutrality agreement with, CWA is the group that obviously is approaching the board right now, and that really is the first step in saying, "Okay, we agree that we're going to work together." Through that process, typically, what's called a card check happens, where the board and union leadership would pick an outside entity that's not partial one way or the other. Oftentimes, somebody from clergy is chosen, and they literally do a card check and look to determine, you know, what percentage of classified staff members in any one category have indicated that they would want to be part of that union, and have that union be the group that negotiates on their behalf for benefits, compensation, and work-related issues. So, that notice of neutrality or that neutrality agreement really is kind of the first step that, you know, once the board feels like they have enough information, should the board decide to move forward, that's kind of the first step in making that happen. There is no timeline that the board is bound to fire, or fire, I just don't know why I said that, follow. The board is bound to follow, if you will, in terms of making a decision and what have you. You know, certainly, I know that you all have been hearing from our classified staff who's come tonight, came last month, and, you know, really are important people in our district and what have you, so that's kind of the fundamentals of it. It's very different, though, than what we're used to in terms of, you know, a bargaining unit, if you will, in the state of Kansas, and for our certified licensed staff, so.
Could the board make a decision to recognize the union without agreeing to bargaining with them, or do you have to do recognition and bargaining at the same time?
Yeah, I think, you know, that would be a question that we would definitely want Chris Pittman to clarify, but I do believe the board, you know, could certainly, you know, the reality is, the union's actually here now, so our staff members can choose to join the union and those kinds of things now. That can happen without the board recognizing CWA as a union, but certainly, our staff members could still organize and be part of that group, but the board has to say, "Yes, we want to recognize CWA as the official group," and enter into that neutrality piece, if you will.
Mr. Babbitt?
Does, if we recognize CWA as the classified union, does that mean all classified staff must be part of that union, or what happens if different, if the custodial staff wants one union and, let's say.
Yeah.
Paraprofessionals want a different union.
Sure, so there are districts in the state that have multiple unions that serve different employee groups, so, you know, it's pretty typical, obviously, across at least our state, that there's an organization that would represent certified licensed staff. There are some districts where there'd be a union that would represent the bus drivers if that was then held, you know, by the district, obviously different than ours, maybe a different group for paraprofessionals, that kind of thing. So, there is no limit, if you will. Typically speaking, and I noticed in the neutrality piece that we were sent, that it looks like what CWA is looking at is that kind of fifty percent threshold, once they're over fifty percent, being able to say, "Okay, we're at this point now ready to represent custodians," or whatever the case may be that way.
Mrs. Johann?
Do we know about the dues and what the cost of those dues would be, and would the staff who choose to be, whether or not they pay these dues, would they also have representation from this union?
Yeah, so, once the board had recognized the union, so like custodians, for example, if that, if the board was to recognize that, that would then become the negotiating group for custodians, and that's why that fifty percent mark is important, because that group then would be negotiated on behalf of all custodians. So, you know, part of that's to protect the board, so you don't negotiate with four hundred people as a group, and then individually with, you know, another four hundred people or that kind of thing, so it would work that way. The other thing that I would clarify is that, you know, there are multiple unions, obviously, in the space that our staff works in, even if one union is the recognized group, doesn't mean that they can't join another union as well, but the board doesn't have to recognize that union necessarily, so.
I don't know, maybe I didn't clarify a little bit the cost of the dues for the staff. Yeah, is that a question?
I don't know what, I don't know what the dues are, I don't know if our staff's currently paying dues or not, but we can try to find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Reagan?
Once you enter into a neutrality agreement with an organization, is it forever? Like, do you, I mean, is there, like, I mean, once we make this decision, are we making it for all future boards, for all future employees? I mean, I guess I'm just curious about the finiteness of this decision.
Yeah, I mean, once it's agreed to and once it's in place, it is finite. You know, as I've done some research, there are places where there have been unions that were established and what have you, and typically, what has happened when they have maybe not been there representing anymore, hasn't necessarily been a change on the board, it's been that maybe union leadership has changed, or the people that led the union went somewhere else to work or switched careers, that kind of thing. That's what I've seen, is I've tried to do some research out there, but I do think, you know, certainly, if the board would vote to enter into this and agree with this, I would say it, you know, certainly, I think that would be the indication that our intention would be that it would be here long-term and we would be partnering.
Mrs. Steele?
The question I have, Dr. Yeager, is, you know, the understanding that our educational unions have, being KNEA and locally ONEA, on how educational funding works, and that to effectuate changes we want to make here at this dais, it almost always starts in Topeka. So, I went online to try to see if I could see a presence from CWA. First, I went online to try to understand the type of union and what they typically have represented, and my understanding, although I'd like more information, is it's the telecom industry is kind of their big space. I also couldn't find their presence in Topeka, giving testimony at conference committee meetings, and in a different industry, you can raise the cost of the service you're providing, and in this industry, you cannot do that. And so, what decisions we make here that involve finances is almost always starting in Topeka, and I just would like to know more about what have they been doing in Topeka to support public education funding? And their understanding that our funding comes from?
Sure.
The legislature?
Yeah, and I've gotten to know Hannah Allison, who I think you all have heard from, who's here tonight, and I'm happy to ask her those questions and some examples of what that's looked like in that engagement.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Board, any other questions?
Are there?
Mrs. Johann?
Are there other options outside of this? Maybe we spoke about that a little bit, for the staff to be represented?
Yeah, I mean, it really is up to our staff, so, you know, there are other organizations across our state that represent classified staff members, not a ton in our area, so there's, there are other organizations that certainly welcome classified staff members, either as part of an organization that's already there, maybe serving education, or organizations that serve specific classified staff members, like bus drivers or something like that. So, it's a mix and match, but really, it's an opera, really, the decision, if you will, in terms of, you know, unionizing grouping is really up to our staff and those involved that way, and then whether or not to recognize that group is up to the Board of Education.
Mr. Babbitt?
Just real quick, one of the ongoing themes of the public comments regarding the union has been pay, respect, and benefits.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, do classified staff have the same benefits package that the certified staff does currently?
They do. It's exactly the same in our system.
Okay.
Is that correct, Dr. Sieg? Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Steele?
I wondered too, on that note, I've, in my time on the board, understood that the benefit package in ALITA is quite robust per cost to employee. Could we have a little bit more information about that?
Yeah.
And how decisions have been made in cost absorption of increasing healthcare costs and what the district has absorbed over the years, as well as how we compare in the benefits area?
Sure, so just to make sure I'm clear on that, so just kind of the benefit cost, if you will, the board covered, you know, benefit cost, and did you say pay as well, or did I'm dreaming that up?
I was specifically speaking to?
Benefits.
Benefits.
Okay.
And, I mean, the cost of benefits to the employee?
Sure.
And I believe we do have, and I don't want to speak on things we don't know, but if you could bring that back to us, and no cost option for a single employee? So, anyway, if we could understand that, that would be helpful.
Sure, absolutely.
Dr. Yurkovich?
I would also like some information on salary schedule, and maybe a comparison with our surrounding districts, like we often talk about with staff. And then, I'm also curious, it was mentioned several times tonight about the reduction of specifically custodial staff in buildings, if we could get some information about how buildings are staffed.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
And we could definitely get some history on how that's happened and what that looks like, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, obviously, I haven't had a couple of opportunities to hear from my classified staff. For me, it's kind of tough to listen and hear that our staff doesn't, they don't feel respected or valued from the board or administration, or even their direct supervisor, so, from my perspective, I think all of that is within our power to fix, right, without even a union being formed. So, can you, and this has been a couple of months in the making, but can you speak to what the district is doing or trying to do to address some of the concerns that we are hearing from our classified staff?
Sure, sure. So, Dr. Sieg actually is kind of heading up those efforts for us right now, so she's walking up there, but one of the things, in addition to what Dr. Sieg is going to share, is this year, at the beginning of the year, Michelle Morse and Eric Hansen, in our HR Division, convened a group of classified staff members, a pretty wide group of classified staff members. I don't remember what that group is officially called, but it's a Classified Staff Member Advisory Group, and largely, that group was created, we had one years ago, but it kind of disbanded, and we started it again this fall, and largely, that was about, you know, certainly, we generally understand that pay is a concern, but it was really about what are those working conditions and other things that we're very clearly in control of in our system, and feeling, helping our staff feel respected and supported and those kinds of things. So, I just wanted to mention that as an ongoing piece that's been happening, but last month, I think, in my superintendent's comments, I talked about some of the roundtables that we're going to be having, and Dr. Sieg and others are leading that work, but Dr. Sieg is really the point person on that, so she'd be happy to tell you about it.
Yeah, so to kind of expand on that work that was begun with Eric and Michelle's work in getting the Classified Employee Council together, was really providing an opportunity to hear from our classified staff, and that is a large employee group when you look at them as a whole, and so, we have put together what we're calling And so we have put together what we're calling roundtables. And so we are organizing those according to those kind of more classified employee groups that kind of fit together, if you will, and recruited the help of our district leadership friends and department leaders to head up those conversations so that it was the individuals that lead them, hearing from them. And so, of course, one of the easiest ways to get feedbacks is to send out a survey. But we really felt like that wasn't what, what we wanted. We wanted something deeper in terms of hearing about the why behind things and maybe even hearing from them in terms of suggestions and ideas. And so that is where the roundtable idea was born from. And so we have about six different employee groups. So our technology team, classified, our operations service center, which includes our grounds, facilities, maintenance teams. Special education is heading up for all of our paraeducators, our, our BIAs, our TPPs. So all of those individuals in that realm. Our human resources team is leading the groups that are working within our offices within our buildings. So our administrative assistants and aides and that, and interpreters as well. And Erica Razzo is joining those groups too. Trying to think if I'm missing any others. Go through here. Special education and food production, sorry. So Scott Kingery and, and his team as well. So invitations are going out to the employees in those groups to join those roundtables. And then those leaders are going to walk through some kind of real-time opportunities for them to provide feedback. So we have five essential questions that they're going to work on in that first session together. And again, recruiting the help of our technology team, they've put together a near pod so that we can get, like, in-the-moment responses to some open-ended questions. And so those essential questions that we're really focusing on are things related to, you know, what it is that they love about their jobs and what brings them every day to work. But then also how they would maybe describe our district to a prospective employee, employee who may be joining the team. Then on the flip side too, we do want to have that open and candid conversation about what is it that you struggle with? Where is it you don't feel like you're supported? And being able to get that information from them. But then providing some time too, for them to have some conversations in some small groups that provides a little bit of security and being able to kind of speak in the moment to give us some, in more in-depth, help us understand when you, when we talk about maybe benefits, let's talk specifics of what it is within benefits that is the struggle. Or when we talk about compensation, sometimes when we talk about those things, we're lumping a lot of different things together. Is this, is this really time off or leave that we're discussing? When we talk about working conditions, what specifically is it? So we'll, we'll work through those five essential questions and that will be in the first session. So the first session with each of these groups is occurring throughout April. And then through May, we'll do a second session with all of these same groups. So the first session is going to then do a deeper dive into three of the five essential questions. And then when we come back in May and circle back around, we'll be able to do a little bit of sharing out of, hey, this is kind of what we gleaned when we were able to go back and do a deeper dive into your responses. And here were some of our ideas. Give us feedback in what, in what you think about those. And then begin that conversation on those remaining two questions to do again, that deeper dive and conversation on those. And then, of course, this is not something that will then end in May, but then devising a plan from there for next steps. So what does this look like as we move forward? And hopefully from there, that will give us some of more of that specific detail that we're needing to know what is it that we maybe need to look at and what might that investment be? Or, you know, there may be things that, you know, not having lived in that specific role, we haven't thought of, that maybe things that we can say, hey, we can make this happen tomorrow. So really looking at those short immediate responses, but then also what are some long-range things we can have in mind and start working towards?
Thank you. Mr. Babbitt.
I, I just, I want to echo this heat conversation. Just, I love the work that we're putting into it, especially with the issues that have been brought up by these people. But a big one that's really stuck out to me as, as speakers have come up is the respect part of it. And I'm, I'm, it saddens me that somebody feels like they need to, I, I, I fully respect anybody's ability to organize, right to organize. It's so important. However, nobody should have to organize to get respect. And so these people that are working so hard for the district, doing these incredible jobs. And I just, I, I, I'd like more detail if we can, if we find out anything more about why they feel disrespected by coworkers, supervisors, the board, the community.
And that is one of our, that is one of the questions is, are the ways, are there ways that you, you do not feel supported in your work? And if so, what are these? So really diving into that question of what is that? What is that looking like? And how can we improve that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, I just want to mention quickly, I so appreciate LaShelle and Josh and our members of SLT. When we talked about this jumping on board quickly and saying, we do need to hear more, we do need to understand. And, you know, figuring out how to organize to talk to about 2,300 people and try to get meaningful feedback and really be able to say the why, not just the what, is really important. And, and I'm also really proud that they've committed to a follow-up meeting again before the end of the year. Then we'll follow through after that. As LaShelle said, I just, I appreciate the time that, that they're spending doing that. But also the time that our classified staff is going to be spending that, doing that as well, because it will take them obviously away from, from what they're doing to provide us that feedback and what have you. So I really appreciate those that are, are willing to have that conversation with us.
Board, any other questions, comments on 11 dot 01?
Um, I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, just like Will said, the respect piece stands out to me. And I'll, I'll just say, thinking about the people my children talk about when they come home, they talk about Mr. Fonzie, they talk about Jorge, they talk about these individuals who are the backbone of our system. And I don't want to repeat what Will said. I, I, I agree so much that figuring out what it is in the, in the dialogue in the community, staff to staff, students to staff, that is creating, you know, a, a, the negative feeling. When you go to work, work is hard enough. Knowing you're fully respected by the people you're serving is so important. And so I appreciate all of the comments and have been thinking about them a lot. And as, as one of our speakers said, like, you know, we are trying to see you and we want to hear you so that we can get your back and make sure that we all feel respected. And so I, I, my hope is, you know, we all share the same end goal. And I appreciate you using your voices. And, you know, to our kids, a lot of you are everything to them. And that is so important. And I hope that we can find ways to make each of you feel that way. Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments on 11 dot 01?
I would just say to our classified staff that's here tonight, it's tough to hear that you don't feel respected. And that's not on you to own, that's on us to own. And we're going to do that. One of our public speakers, Fiona, she mentioned using her voice. And, you know, I, I applaud you all for being here, for showing up, for using your voice, for exercising your power. If you know anything about me, you know that I, I do come from an organizing background. And I would never be ashamed and to say that I support, you know, working folks, trying to advocate for themselves and to, to get more and to get better. Because that's how we got, what we got now. It was for folks organizing and for, for the past to, for us in, currently in the future to reap some of those benefits. So thank you for showing up. Thank you for using your voice. Again, it's not on you to own it. We'll own it. We'll do what we can to, to get it right and to get better. But keep holding our feet to the fire. And we'll continue to, as has been said here before, hopefully reach the same end goal. And that's to make sure that the kids in these buildings are prepared for when they leave our buildings. So board, moving on to 11 dot 02, topics for discussion.
Mrs. Reagan.
Sure. Um, well, I, I feel like we were just here, but it was also, you know, I feel like just the fastest month ever. So we were very, you know, talking about the Taste of the Town coming up at our last board meeting. And, and that has since taken place. And just the outpouring of support of our community for mental health is inspiring. You know, and I wouldn't be, it would be remiss of me not to say, I wish that we didn't have to raise the money to support our kids in that way. You know, I wish that those supports, you know, were given in, in the community beyond Aletha. But the fact that our community invests in our students' mental health so that people can access the services they need when they need them is really powerful. Because mental health is health. And that is so important. And the, the staff at the foundation who made that happen, the kids who made the food, I don't think any of them are here anymore, but so delicious. And just, you know, seeing their hard work rewarded with the accolades they got in their competitions is amazing. Today is National School Librarian Day. I was reminded of that by a friend of mine. And I think of my elementary school librarian back in Bellevue, Nebraska, Mrs. Butler. I remember going to the library and picking out books and knowing you have the guidance of a trusted adult when you don't know what you want, but you do know what you want in the library. And so to our library media specialists, thank you so much for your investment in our children's learning, helping them develop as critical thinkers and helping them find ways to enjoy literacy. I had the privilege of sitting in on the Leader in My Life essay reading committee meeting at Brome Elementary. Brome is one of my site council schools. And I was able to sit in and read blindly. The students' names were not on the essays, but about the leaders in their lives, because Brome is a leader in me's school. And just those essays, you know, hearing about the adults that make an impact on our kids and hearing that from the voices of third, fourth, and fifth graders in their writing was powerful. And it definitely filled my cup to see their words on the page and read all of their positive thoughts. And I appreciated the invitation from the principal there. And finally, I just, you know, we have so many days of recognition for all kinds of different things. You know, World Autism Day was on Tuesday. And, you know, we have recognition months for everything. But I did also want to say, you know, in the vein of I see you and I hear you, since 2009, there's been an international day of trans visibility. And I just wanted to say that all of the kiddos in our district, whoever you are, the goal is that you feel welcome and safe being in school and learning. And I see you too. Thank you.
Dr. Jokovic.
I'm actually going to tag on a couple of things that Claire mentioned with the Taste of the Town. But I want to recognize the staff at the Aletha Public School Foundation. Having the opportunity to serve on that board as a member of this board has really given me so much background and insight into behind the scenes and the work that they do. And it's such a small staff, but they, we had a, a board meeting just last week and have started planning for next year's Taste of the Town. So it's a year-long project to, to get that off the ground. And they, and that's along with all of the other things they do. That's not the only thing. And then the librarians, I want to thank the librarians who reached out to, to board members and, and other staff and invited us to read earlier in March, because that was a treat to be in the buildings and spend time with, with those little guys and, and read a, a favorite book or, or a story. Just delightful. So thanks to them and all they do.
Mrs. John.
Um, do you know what the difference in funds raised by the Taste of the Town were from year to year? It was $380,000 this year. I think it was about $250?
$340.
The year prior? Oh, okay. But I just, I really, I've, I've gone for the last three years. I actually went to the virtual one when they did that during COVID as well. And have really enjoyed being a part of it and seeing it grow from year to year. And I look forward to the next year. I'm excited that you're already planning it. And that's one of the first things that I started to get involved in when my kids started in the school district here. I just wanted to say thank you, you know, again for that night. That was a wonderful night. And appreciate all the work that the Public School Foundation does for our school district. I have the joy and pleasure of being in healthcare. And I know it's not by coincidence that we share a week with teachers for our appreciation week. So I just wanted to bring the attention, that's coming up very soon. You know, with the end of school and everything coming up, all the activities, I know I just, I updated my full calendar. And I know that I'll be needing to do something for the teachers. So Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up the very first full week of May, May 6th through the 10th. So put that on your calendars. I know you want to spoil our teachers. And so I just wanted to remind everyone.
Board, any other topics for discussion? So I do have one. And it's a thank you to my fellow board members. When, when life gets to lifing, you'll figure out real quick, you know, who's there to support you. And a special thank you to this gentle lady to my left for, for filling the gaps. The last six, seven, however many weeks it's been, you all have extended grace and, and held me and my family down. So I just want to say thank you all and I appreciate you.
Dr. Jaeger.
Man, I feel like I shouldn't even talk. This has been a celebratory time tonight. So, you know, there's, there's several things I do want to mention though. So, you know, you, you saw our culinary kiddos today from OATC. And as you know, they are state champs at Kansas Pro Start. But they'll be going to Nationals in Baltimore here coming up. And some of us had an opportunity to see their, I think it's called their competition dish. I don't remember what it was called, but truly impressive what our young people do with the leadership of our staff there. And, you know, OATC offers so many incredible programs for our kids. You may not know this, but we are the EMT State Champs at Kansas H O S A S L C. Sounds, I, I don't know what all that means, but it sounds really important. And then we are the EMT State Champs. And get this, we're the second-place champs in medical terminology. So, yeah, it sounds very important. And if you're like me, when you go to the doctor, sometimes I have to say, I'm going to need that in a different way, because I'm not sure what you're saying. So obviously we have young people who are, are learning amazing things and, and showing themselves very well across the state, which is cool. National Paraprofessional Day actually was yesterday. And you may have noticed on social media that our district, for our newest segment of Welcome to My Classroom, it is a feature on a paraprofessional in our district. Her name's Marilyn Mayberry. And I was blessed to work with Marilyn when I was a principal in the district and have known her for a long time. But my hope is that, that everyone will share it far and wide, because I think it really exemplifies the rewarding nature of being a paraprofessional in one of our schools. So I would encourage everybody to watch that. It's also National Assistant Principals Week this week. So as we talk about backbones of our organ, I know there's, there was one for everything, isn't there? But really, as we think about the backbone of our organization, our assistant principals in our schools do so much every day to take care of our young people, take care of our staff. And I just want to thank them as well. The week of, of April 14th, I'm sorry, April 15th through April 19th is National Volunteer Week. And as you talk about just the incredible things that sometimes are unseen in our district, Heather Schoonover in our Community Development Department, they wrangle probably the, the city's largest group of volunteers and do such a nice job in getting people into our schools, supporting our young people, youth mentors, all those kinds of things. We're so blessed in our district to have so many folks that way. Next week is also National Library Week. So it's a great time to visit with your librarian and check that out. And, you know, check out a book and that kind of thing. Also, National Administrative Professional Day is April 24th. I usually get help from communications with some things I may consider saying. And they really thought this was important this, this, this month. So, but, you know, as with any employee group in our district, we have administrative professionals in every one of our schools, every one of our buildings. And again, another group that is such a backbone to our organization that we could not, what we do, what we do for our students and staff without them. Many of you had the opportunity to attend site council last week. I want to thank Dr. Reeves and his team and others from general administration, Dr. McMullin, Mr. Albers, several people who gave great presentations last week and really enjoyed. Mr. Albers, several people who gave great presentations last week and really enjoyed seeing one of our largest groups has attended that in quite some time, which was terrific. Taylor Bussinger, our Kansas Teacher of the Year, kicked us off that night and just another reminder of what a rock star he is as he kicked us off that evening as well. Next Monday, in case you've missed it, how you could have, I don't know, is a solar eclipse. So we are excited to have the second in just a few years, once in a lifetime opportunity for a solar eclipse. Julie Miller is even still in the room. I wouldn't have said that if I knew you were here. But we're, we're really excited about that and Julie has done a great job of preparing our schools for the right eye protection and things so our students and our staff can participate in a really cool opportunity that way. I'm almost done. On April 23rd, we have our next board and community conversations, so we'll be looking forward to that. For all of those of us that were classroom teachers who worked in schools and certainly people doing it right now, state assessments are underway right now and as I've been in schools as recently as today and then last week, that's a consistent theme that you see kids say, we just finished the reading assessment or, or you walk in and the teacher's saying, okay, we're getting all jazzed up, here we go. So, but our, our staff has done such a great job of, of working hard this year so our kids are prepared for state assessments. But anybody that's taught in a grade level that has state assessments, there is a stress that comes with that, both in getting your kids through the state assessment, but also having them prepared and what have you. So I just want to recognize our entire system because everybody really is involved in that. We continue to have some work with professional counsel around the elementary day specifically. Our, our group has met, I think, well, quite frequently right now, but last night they spent some time talking to professional counsel about what that elementary day looks like. I had the opportunity yesterday to pop into a subcommittee from professional counsel, probably about 30 teachers, administrators, really talking the ins and outs of what the task force has worked on and what have you. And certainly not easy because we're talking major change here, but I just want to say I really appreciate our staff members who have been engaged in that conversation and are trying to figure those things out. And I also want to thank the rest of our staff for being patient while those things are getting figured out because change is hard and we know it's hard and there's a lot of people committed to getting that done as quickly as we can. So people can finish this year strongly, enjoy their summer and come back ready next year. I do want to highlight just one more time, our presentations tonight, you know, having Amanda come and talk about her 18 to 21 programs and then Mike Flynnthrope coming and talking about Quarterstone and what we're doing to support our students to receive ELL supports. There are so many examples in our system where our district is doing things to meet the needs of kids in really special ways that there's so much of it that it's almost hard to see it all, if that makes sense. And I'm so proud of the, the programs and what they shared tonight because they are great examples of what we're doing to meet the individual needs of kids as well as trying to prepare this entire system of almost 30,000 kids. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Before we move to executive session, Dr. Jaeger, I do want to circle back to one of our agenda items. Our spring parent teacher conference data, elementary is over, or 90% of total, but then we'll move into middle school and high school, we're not even at 25% for a variety of reasons. And, you know, I realize, you know, one of which, you know, our, our teachers do a tremendous job of communicating with parents on a daily basis, weekly basis. So a lot of parents feel like there's no need to go attend that. But I want to ask, can we start a conversation on how we can better use and utilize our teachers' time specifically for these conferences to get more value from that? If that's the will of the board, okay with the board, I would like to kind of start a, whatever that looks like, but just start something formal and try to figure out a way to, to be more efficient and effective with that time.
Agreed.
Yeah. We're happy to do that. You know, I, I appreciate the points you made, Mr. Boyd. Things have changed a lot since we started doing parent teacher conferences. So I do think, you know, it definitely makes sense to stop and, and really determine if what we're doing is still best practice and if there's something that would meet the needs of our students most importantly, but then our staffs and our families as well. So we're happy to do that.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to 1301, how much time do we need for executive session?
Let's start with 30 minutes.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employee, employer, employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representative or representatives of the body or agency and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:45.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Steele and a second by Mr. Babbitt.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
At 9:05, who would like to make the motion to extend? I approve that we extend executive session for 20 minutes returning at 9:05. And second?
I'm going to do a rule today.
And I see.